I will call the meeting to order. This is the Concord Public Schools School Committee. It is June 15, 2021. I want to welcome people back to a live meeting. I will ask for the forbearance of any Zoom visitors as we shake down this new hybrid that we're starting tonight. I want to welcome our new member, Tracy Morano. Tracy, good evening.
Thank you.
And we will note that we are being recorded. We want to acknowledge Minute Man Media Network. Thank you. And because we have one member remote, we will do the roll call, please.
Anderson present.
Booth present.
Morano present.
Ms. Duffe present.
Randy present.
Thank you very much. We begin the first meeting post Concord Town meeting with the organization of the committee. And I will ask for a motion that the...
I'll make a motion to recognize Alexa Anderson, Courtland Booth, Tracy Morano, Fatima Mesdatt, and Cynthia Rainey as members of the Concord School Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. And roll call vote, please.
Anderson aye.
Booth aye.
Morano aye.
Ms. Duffe aye.
Randy aye.
And I will note that we have accepted our responsibilities for the tenure in front of us. Thank you very much. It is now, as the next order of business, the election of officers. And I will note that this evening, when the Concord Carlisle School Committee joins us, when we have our Carlisle members and commence with the joint school committee meeting, there will be no regional election of officers this evening. And that's because the Carlisle elections have not been held. So that task will come before us sometime this summer. And I'm sorry to say, we don't have summer dates set at this point. We do expect a meeting sometime between July 20 and July 30. So at this point, it is my privilege to nominate Cynthia Rainey as the chair of the Concord Public Schools School Committee. Cynthia has a long history of public service with the school district and the town in general, has served admirably as a vice chair this past year. And having performed that duty, she has the privilege now, thank you, of, I hope, accepting the role of the chair. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor, please.
Anderson aye.
Booth aye.
Morano aye.
Randy aye. Oh, sorry.
I want to go for you, Cynthia. Ms. Duffe aye.
And Cynthia Rainey makes it unanimous. Thank you. We will now have the ceremonial changing of the chairs. This is a physical move.
Need a gloom truck here.
So if the audience will indulge us for a moment. Thank you.
I'll be back. Okay, here we go. All right.
We're almost there. You get your hand jacked.
Yes. Oh, my goodness, yes.
Although we certainly know who you are.
No, but that's okay. Okay. Move complete, sort of.
There we go. You got it.
All right. Now, without looking at my computer, I would like to entertain a motion for the vice chair. And I'd like to nominate myself, Alexa Anderson, to be vice chair of the Concord School Committee.
I'd be pleased to second that.
Thank you very much. Discussion.
Alexa and her colleague Fatima have been with us for the past year. And we all know what the first-year learning curve is like. It's very steep. And if you're willing to accept, we want to thank you for stepping up to the role.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson aye.
Booth aye.
Morano aye.
Ms. Duffe aye.
Randy aye. And congratulations.
Thanks.
I'd like to entertain a motion for an appointment of Erin Higgins as recording secretary.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, she's served us faithfully. And we're pleased she continues to do so. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Anderson aye.
Booth aye.
Morano aye.
Ms. Duffe aye.
Randy aye. Congratulations, Erin.
She's on Zoom, so she hears you.
Great, thank you. Next order of business is CPS end-of-the-year update, close update.
I think I'm going to turn it over to Jared fairly quickly. Our goal tonight is to verbally begin to give you information. I'll let Jared give you the timeline. But unlike the region where we have to make decisions definitively by the end of June, the local budget with Concord has a little more flexibility in terms of timelines. So we just want to give you some idea of where we are fiscally and start to predict a little bit of how your end will look.
Great. Well, thank you. I was hoping this to be more of a conversation rather than a memo, as Dr. Hunter just said. Right now, we're tracking. We're tracking well. We have about just over $800,000 in unencumbered. That doesn't mean that that's going to be expenses that are not spent. I know a lot more, a little bit more. I know where we are right now after the last payroll, payroll '26. We have until July 15 to close. I do not anticipate there to be a surplus. Obviously not a deficit. The goal is to have all of our circuit breaker revolving account to be 100% fully funded in addition to having potentially all of our prepaid tuitions, which I've identified about $400,000, give or take, right now that will be eligible to prepay. So we're allowed to prepay our first three months of tuitions. Collaboratives, we are allowed to pay the full year amount. So it is tracking really well. A lot of the reasons for that is really due to the shutdown at the beginning of the year. We saved a little bit in, well, some supplies that we brought over from last fiscal year. Utilities, a little bit. Even though the schools were open, they weren't being used as much, such as the sewer. That's gone down a little bit, not much. And tuitions, tuitions are a little bit less than what we budgeted. And again, the ESER funds as well as the CARES Act. So a couple of weeks ago, they did announce the third round of the emergency release, emergency funds. Concord is getting $995,139. So I'm learning a little bit more about that. That is something that hopefully we can carry for as long as possible, I believe up till FY '24. So that will help us contingency in the future. In addition, we do plan to carry over the original ESER emergency relief amount, about $112,000, as well as the emergency relief two, which is $443,100. I will know more once we close out, once we start reclassifying things. Again, the goal is to set us up for the FY '22 and FY '23 and a little bit in FY '24. Other than that, food service. Food service, right now, we are projecting a deficit. That is something that it's not going to be... We carry over monies, so it's not going to be going into the red. But we will have a shorter balance than we had when we started. The goal is to at least try and get back to about four months' worth of expenses. You're allowed between, you know, up to about six months' worth of expenses in there, which is, we average about $60,000 a month in expenses. So that's something we'd like to put back. But we won't know until, again, probably later, probably after the last payroll into July. We tend to close out in the middle of August. That's when I really start to know our numbers. But I'll have a preliminary closeout amount probably by that July meeting. So again, everything is tracking well. And I think we will be nicely set up for FY '22.
This is the last meeting of the fiscal year, so do extend our thanks to your entire team for unusual management tasks that were necessary this year. Curious about the emergency relief monies. Were all the sums that you mentioned Concord Public Schools specific? Or were any co-mingled with the town's accounts?
Nope, these are all Concord Public Schools specific. The town did give us part of their CARES Act money, $126,825, so we did use that. The rest is all specifically Concord Public Schools.
Thank you.
So we'll have a motion later on. But right now, we don't have any action on that report.
Great.
More to come. So our next, now move to the action items. We need to vote to surplus quite a few materials from the Alcott School Library. I'll entertain a motion, then we can have a discussion. I'll entertain a motion that the Concord School Committee votes to surplus books at the Alcott Library.
So moved, unless that was a motion I'm seconding. I'm not sure.
No, I was looking for somebody to move a motion.
So moved.
Yep, thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sense?
Oh. Are we discussing, or am I...?
Yes. Discussing. Any discussion?
Well, I think it's an opportunity to thank our library specialists, instructional specialists in the library and note that Dr. Hunter, this is probably part of their ongoing process of knowing what's in their inventory and what belongs in and what belongs out and why. We thank you for their work.
And they're getting used or reused. Right? That's goodness. Great. Roll call, please.
Anderson aye.
Booth aye.
Morano aye.
Ms. Duffe aye.
Randy aye. And our next action item is to accept the grade five class gift, class gift to Alcott. And I don't know...
I move that the Concord School Committee vote to accept a gift to the Alcott School from the fifth-grade committee as outlined in Principal Craco's memo dated June 8, 2021. Dr. Hunter, do you want to speak to that after a second?
Second.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Hunter, do you have any...?
Sure. I wasn't sure if you were ready.
Yeah.
So it's very traditional that a fifth-grade class would leave a gift to the building. And so the fifth-grade committee at Alcott has proposed gifting a bookshelf to go into the Alcott Library to display books around the theme of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We're actively really working with the librarians and making sure that we're continuing to broaden our diverse repertoire and that kids are really all able to see themselves in the collections that we offer. So the bookshelf would be a first piece of that. And I think we're humbled to see their honor for the Alcott and district leaders and staff who got us through COVID, I think is the intent. And they're donating 10 new books around the DEI theme. I'll just read what it says here. Concord-based social justice organization, High Five Equality, which was founded by an Alcott family, will also match the book donation. So it'll be a total of 20. So it's a really lovely gift and right in line with all of our strategic planning initiatives. And will certainly benefit the students at Alcott.
Huge thank you to the fifth-grade class and to the other educators working with them and the families. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson aye.
Booth aye.
Morano aye.
Ms. Duffe aye.
And Randy aye. And our next action item is to vote to prepay the special education tuitions that we just discussed.
So in years past, we sort of just had a discussion. And the committee voted to allow any surplus to be paid for tuitions. This year, I sort of formalized it and came up with this motion right here. Like I said, we've identified about $400,000 now that we can use to prepay. It is not a requirement for the school committee to authorize it, but it is sort of required for this discussion to take place in the following minutes. So I figured, you know, why not just memorialize it in a vote? And going forward, I think it's good practice.
Great. So you mentioned a number of approximately $400,000. Obviously, you've got up to $800,000?
Yes, but I do, right now, but that doesn't mean that's going to be available. Right now, I think after we close some of the other gaps, it will probably go to zero. What we did is we literally went through every single tuition that we had and identified what we thought could be prepaid. And that's how we came up with this amount. It won't be, if there's, there won't be much more than this and it might even be a little bit less. And if there is a, if there are surplus, there's really only, there's not many places that we can put it. So it would be going back to the town and we'd just go into the free cash.
Very good.
So Jared, just do you want to clarify? Because the motion doesn't actually have the number in it. It just helps them understand.
Sure. So I did not put the number on it really on purpose. So this just authorizes the prepayment of FY '22 tuitions. You can add it in approximate amount. But I actually, on purpose, did not just because I just wanted you to authorize that we could do this.
Are we ready for a motion?
I think we are.
Okay.
I move that the school committee authorize the prepayment of fiscal 2022 tuitions in accordance with MGL Chapter 71, Section 71D, and MGL Chapter 40, Section 4E.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anderson aye.
Booth aye.
Morano aye.
Ms. Duffe aye.
And Randy aye. Let's see where we are here. So...
I move that the, if I may...
Yeah.
Through the chair, that the Concord School Committee enter into executive session under Purpose 3 of the Open Meeting Law to conduct strategy sessions concerning whether to hear a Step 3 grievance filed by the Concord Teachers Association, CTA, and return to open session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anderson aye.
Booth aye.
Morano aye.
Ms. Duffe aye.
Randy aye. So it's 5:19. What would be an estimated return approximately?
25 minutes.
Yeah. So 5:45?
We're close to.
Okay.
Very good. We are going into room three, which is right here. Fatima, you have a different Zoom link to use?
Welcome. I'd like to call to order the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee and have a roll call, please.
Anderson present.
Booth present.
Morano present.
Ms. Duffe present.
Randy present.
Wilson present. Thank you. We'll start with public comments. If you are from the public, this is a new thing to navigate. Raise your hand through the Participants tab. Though we have, oh, we can't see the Participants tab. Yep, so click the raise hand in the Participants tab or turn on your video so that we can see you. And when you are there, please give your name and your address. And you may speak for up to three minutes. Hi, welcome. Welcome, Carlin.
Maybe?
Carlin Reed, 83 Woodson. Thank you for doing this by Zoom as well as in person. It is difficult to see your faces and the audio needs to be a little closer to your microphones. But I do appreciate the efforts. Thanks, folks.
Thanks, welcome. Do you have a public comment for us?
I think that was it.
Was it?
I think that was it.
Oh, thanks. Okay. Do we have any others? Court, I can't see that participant list still.
I don't see it. I will be back here, and it's pretty clear.
I believe we are... Okay, I don't see any raised hands.
No.
All right, then let's move on to chairs and liaisons reports. Yes, Alexa. We, the Concord Carlisle CPAC had their monthly board meeting last Thursday. They elected their new board. And I think they seeded almost all open positions with a couple with maybe like one or two left vacant. They are certainly looking for more volunteers if anyone out there is interested. And that was really the big news. Thank you. Court?
I think I speak for the entire school committee committees when I thank everybody involved for a very successful Concord Town meeting. Thank you to Dr. Hunter and Mr. Stanton for queuing us up for their important part of that. And thanks to all the town volunteers and officials that put it together.
And then Lori, Jared, and I met with Carlisle FinCom last night to discuss a bit more in depth how we are utilizing the surplus. And so we can, we'll talk more about that, I think, when we bring that up, when we bring up that discussion. But they're very involved to know about the process. And it was a productive conversation, I think.
Great. Thank you.
Correspondence.
So I have a couple for Concord that I received one on behalf of the regional school district. A parent inquired about our school resource officers. And we were able to clarify that their role is largely safety and climate oriented and not law enforcement, as might happen in other environments, but not in a school. And we heard from a citizen in her private capacity who's also an elected official to express thanks to many in the schools for a successful year, but notably Dr. Hunter, who she referred to as "a gem", so we pass that on to you, Dr. Hunter. Then from the green team at the high school, of course, they wanted to not leave a carbon footprint. So this was hand-delivered to my door. And it reads, "Dear Concord Carlisle High School and School Committee, thank you so much for your support of the green team this year. Thanks to you, we have a pollinator garden that is coming along really well. Exclamation point. We really appreciate it." Thanks again. Kaia Heini, excuse me, and the green team. And Kaia is the class of '24. And I would only note in closing that really, I think the thanks go to Kaia and the green team and the high school leadership. And I know Ms. Geini of the Science Department is front and center on that effort.
Great.
Thank you to the green team for your kind note.
Yes. And thank you for coming to tell us about your project. Or, yeah, that was a great presentation. And then on the regional side, we just had, we had a question about curriculum content. And that was directed to Kristen and the administration. And we're taking care of those conversations. Yeah? Okay. And so we are at superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. So here we are in the eve of the last day of school. Somehow, 2021 is finally coming to a close. We definitely want to celebrate all that has happened this year. It's been such a collective effort across every aspect of the schools and the community and the parent educator partnerships and most of all, these amazing kids you send us every day and what they brought and rose to and made work and made the best of. So tomorrow's the last day, half-day. High school's been on exam schedule, so their schedule already has been altered. Um, elementary will release half-day tomorrow. The staff is with us until Thursday. So we're looking forward to wrapping up with them and getting a chance to catch our breath and wish them well for all their extraordinary efforts. I think it's worth noting, because we talked a lot about COVID and then we just stopped because we could. We have not had a COVID case in the schools in any way related to the school since May 19. So that's just such a reassuring data point and I think really validating in the efforts we're making to expect normalcy in the fall in terms of what our routines will be. The state continues to say to us that we will all be back in person. Remote learning will not be an option. The only caveat still out there is whether the youngest kids who are not yet vaccinated will be wearing masks. More to come from them, I'm sure. But that is the message they are very, very strongly sending us as school closes. We have a meeting again tomorrow with the commissioner where I expect he will reiterate that. The other big piece of information is the lack of distancing they're going to be asking of us, which really does allow us normalcy because we don't have to reconfigure things. So that's all exciting. End-of-year events and activities. Obviously, graduations have been happening. We really successfully graduated the CCHS class of 2021. Same day, the eighth-grade class was celebrated. We double-dipped there for COVID reasons primarily and making that logistically doable. Those activities have just continued. I was able to join from my desk, finally, some children, not just adults, no disrespect. But to be with kids from my desk was great. Grade eight had their award. Actually, the whole middle school with a special celebration of grade eight had their award ceremony this morning in a really creative hybrid mode with the kids and their parents in person and Zoom in the classrooms so that the kids in the classrooms could yell and celebrate the kids that were getting the awards and all of us could join in from a distance. It was just very well done. Grade five is celebrating a lot this week as well. Is able to join into the Willard and Alcott ceremonies that were held remotely this morning. And tomorrow, there's a car parade for Thoreau. So it's just been a really exciting time. And I think even more so because we're doing things that we would normally be doing in maybe modified format. Really, my only last updates are about summer programming. We have 21 students later for summer programming at the high school that is primarily special education-related, primarily in our most intensive programs. K-8 will be housed at Willard for summer school July 6 through three weeks. We have a mix of special education services there as well as general education. And we're excited to have that all in one roof. It's worth noting, I think, other summer activities that will be going on in the schools. Case Collaborative, we are hosting at Thoreau. We have not been able to host a case classroom since we reconfigured the middle schools, which as a member district is a bit of a struggle when you're not able to provide the space that really is part of the intent of membership. So we are very excited. We were supposed to do it a year ago. Very excited to have them at Thoreau for the summer. Coming offline almost immediately will be Alcott so that we can begin the work on our energy updates and replacements,[1714.33] on our energy updates and replacements, which is also a summer delay from what we had initially thought. And Ripley will be getting some upgrades this summer as well in terms of energy. And that's a combined town sponsored, Green Communities grant, that will subsidize what we're going to match so that those updates are happening more quickly than we had initially expected. So we will be busy this summer in a very different way than last summer. So we're glad about that for sure and glad to give everyone the break. We all need the break, kids, families, staff, everyone needs the break. So we're excited to, to see that in light and really get to step back. And I think as we reflect, I think we're going to be pretty impressed with what we pulled off and that it went as well as it did. Certainly not perfectly, but overall incredibly well and served our, most of all served the kids really well. So those are my updates tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I just have a, about how many students in the summer school?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. I meant to. We have 94 special education students and 66 generally and ELL combined.
And then that number?
It's fairly typical to, we generally run about 200 kids in the summers, give or take, so we're not.
It didn't seem like.
No, we're not extraordinarily large due to COVID. We did invite perhaps many more kids because of COVID, but families are also taking some space, I think.
Yes, yes.
And we're glad for that too.
Yes, absolutely. So.
There are no other questions, comments? No? Then I'd like to welcome Heather Bout back.
Long time.
One more for all.
Can I come up and join you?
Yes, of course.
So thank you, thank you so much to Heather and to Alexa.
Do you want to just come over here? Because then.
Then you're on.
Can he see you on camera way over there?
Actually, and that's easier because Alexa is here.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, or flip, yeah, flip over once.
I think Heather's why we're in person and parting comments when we ask students, oh, I just wish we were going to be in person before I left.
I'm sorry, it's my fault.
Well, well, here we are.
No, a little call to the governor and I make things happen.
I turned that one on, so.
Oh, thank you. I'll move that one here then.
Thank you.
Just look, somebody took over snack jobs.
I think they are admirably trying to fill your shoes.
I was almost wondering if I should order pizza for the evening session later.
So welcome, Heather.
Well, thank you.
And thank you so much to Alexa and Heather for shepherding us through the, the evaluation process, for synthesizing everything, for really pacing it out at a, at a nice rate. I think it was good.
So good.
To, you know, it was so well organized. I think that Dr. Hunter has seen the evaluations. We have the report in the discussion here. I think that everybody's had, I hope everyone feels that they've had an opportunity to, to share what they need to share, to get their, their thoughts across. But if you have any more thoughts, comments, questions, whatever, please reach out to the chairs and Dr. Hunter.
And Heather, just for our huge audience, if you want to.
I want to state my name and address, don't I?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
If you could just like give a little one-on-one on, you know, what, we don't, isn't just our idea of doing an evaluation, Dr. Hunter.
Yes.
That's a requirement.
A state requirement.
And we follow a rubric or try to and so far.
Back up and start high level.
Yeah.
Well, since I'm a visitor now, I should state that I'm Heather Bout in 52 Simon Willard Road. And it's hopefully remembered until recently. So Alexa and I did this together this year. Thanks for having us present at all. So I don't know, I'll kind of kick off with that high level and then we can, we can get into the details for today. So as we all, the school committee has three primary roles. One of it, which is hiring and support hiring, managing superintendent. So one of our primary objectives, one of our goals every year is to run the superintendent evaluation process. It is highly regulated by DESI. We have a form that every school committee in this state fills out to run the evaluation. We've all been really working on this all year because it starts in the fall. Well, usually in the spring, it's the beginning of our year, but it starts in the summer or fall when we set the goals for the year. We then do a formative evaluation, discussion of where we are on those goals mid-year. And by the end, we fill out the final summative evaluation. Then that gets sent back to DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And we present it here. So what we've done for this year, based on those goals and the process, we all agreed on our process step by step and schedule in the fall. We did the formative in January and then come spring, we each had, and this is for everybody out there, we each had our individual meetings with Dr. Hunter. We each filled out the evaluation form for ourselves. So there ended up seven individual evaluations. And then what Alexa and I have done over the past 10 days is take all of those and average them into one summative evaluation. So that becomes Dr. Hunter's evaluation. The way we did it was really, is actually very objective. There's no subjectivity in this at all. The ratings themselves are actually numerical averages of what we all put in. If anybody's interested, they can see Alexa's amazing spreadsheet. And all of the comments, we actually just took quotes from everybody. So you will see your own words, they not, will not be in quotes because Alexa and I did not ourselves write anything in the summative comments other than what we had in our individuals. So we went through everybody's seven and took pieces of everybody's comments, put them together, tried to make it sound like a coherent paragraph. And that is what led to the summative form that we have now. So we can go through it. Do you want me to kind of do the pile of the pieces that I summarized and then you?
It's your last night.
Well, you know. Yes, but this was a joint effort. Definitely, well, I'll be off of everybody, but then the summary on behalf of both of us. So why don't I go through, I don't know, are you going to put it up or should I just, are we putting it up or no? Or should I just talk through it? I'll just talk through it.
I'll talk through it, yeah.
I think the link is on the agenda.
People can look at it. Okay. So let me start with, Dr. Hunter, congratulations, you're an exemplary leader. And this committee has been very impressed with not only your whole tenure, but this past year and your ability to react to an incredible global pandemic and lead us through with shining colors. So again, the overall rating is exemplary. Sorry, this keeps coming up with, I just have to clear out, sorry. It wasn't letting me connect. Okay. We're going to cancel that. So the overall rating is exemplary and we congratulate you and thank you. So where we end up, we looked through all of the goals. As everybody knows, there are two different sections to the evaluation. One is based on the goals that we mentioned. The other is actually four standards that are defined by DESI. So we first go through all of the goals, which are grouped into three categories, professional practice, student learning and district improvement goals. In all three of those high level categories, according to the seven evaluations, the superintendent met all goals. And on the high level standards, which are instructional leadership, that's standard one. Standard two is management and operations. Standard three is family and community engagement. And standard four is professional culture. The, and as we've all discussed, the goal, the ratings from exemplary down to unsatisfactory, of course, have various scales. Proficient is considered really the standard for a good, strong superintendent in the state. And Dr. Hunter was proficient in standards one, three and four. And in standard two, management and operations, she was exemplary. Again, all based on the numerical averages of everybody's ratings. So I will go through the comments. It is long. I don't know that we want to read through the whole thing because that will take a long time. But let me just hit on kind of the high points in the summary of each paragraph. I will read the first paragraph because it, they're the high level comments. And again, these are comments from all of us. It starts off, Dr. Hunter is a tremendous leader of our, of our districts. She is no doubt a leader in her field and is regarded highly by all stakeholders in the district. Her commitment to the goals, values and mission of the district and above all the best interest of students guides her daily work. Dr. Hunter courageously leads by example and inspires her staff to strive for excellence. She maintains high standards as well as the intrinsic integrity that defines her. And that is so much of what we value and respect in Dr. Hunter. The next section, pretty much by everybody, was primarily about the incredible health crisis that we faced this year and how Dr. Hunter dealt with it. The, the summative and the conclusive, definitely unanimous opinion is that she is a strong, decisive and smart leader who steered our schools effectively in the face of this health crisis. So there is a myriad of positive comments on how you did that. Primarily focused on the collaboration and the engaging, the numerous groups who stepped in to help us, but who also needed your leadership to make all of this happen and bring it together. You were, you did it in a way that was based on collaboration and you kept your focus on the high standards and the students, which is always at the forefront of what you do and we see that. You addressed the year's difficulties with confidence, compassion and integrity and maintained an optimism that I, even I respect after having been told I'm the same way. And we commend you on that. Outside of the pandemic, there are also many comments based on your other strengths. Innovative vision, exceptional management and communication skills, the organizational and planning skills to execute on vision, collaboration and inclusive approach, bringing people together, communication and leadership on a daily basis, being an active listener and knowing when you need more information and acting on that. Overall, there are also so many other things that you accomplished this year. And to, to highlight them in list form, outside of the pandemic, Dr. Hunter accomplished so much, such as her, she and her team very capably supported the school committee in bargaining with seven units throughout the two districts, which is incredible amount of bargaining. This year's budget process was very efficient, especially in light of the pandemic. Her leadership and direction regarding RTI practices and screenings lays the groundwork for a consistent approach throughout both districts. Once the CMS building project restarted in December, she helped the committee to complete the feasibility study and move into schematic design. She has moved the districts forward in relation to diversity, equity, inclusion and continued to manage improvements in special education. So that's a lot of quantifiable success there. In looking ahead, there were many comments about things that we can also do more and further. Some members expressed a desire for instructional leadership and innovative practices to be further showcased in the coming year. Would love to see a lot of that innovative work now that we have hopefully some COVID efforts behind us. With regards to, let me see, in special education, would love to see more on the social, emotional and special learning needs. On the middle school project, there, there were some comments about looking for an even more defined process going forward, about the process checkpoints and basically making sure that the community is totally, that it's very transparent to the community to generate that trust and confidence that will be needed at town meeting. You know, that's a focus. And with DEI, there is so much that's been happening. And some members mentioned wanting to see even more further development of goals and structure related to the equity inclusion. So that's all stuff that we know you're focused on. The summative conclusion, and I'll read again from here of the school committee, is that Dr. Hunter is exemplary in her role. They have committed to an extended tenure for Dr. Hunter based on their confidence and expectations in her leadership and look forward to even further progress in the future. Dr. Hunter is a leader among leaders. She has established herself as a true leader, not only of our schools, but of our entire community. We are unspeakably fortunate to have her. Thank you. And I will pass it over to Alexa to go through comments on each of the standards.
Sure.
So as Heather mentioned, there are four standards. Standard one, which is instructional leadership, had an overall rating. There was, that was where we were fully in consensus with each other in a proficient rating for that standard. The, the sort of core piece that I think came out of this standard was that in evaluating this particular standard, it was important that we do it with the lens focused on, on COVID and how we manage instructional leadership despite the obstacles of the pandemic. So it also in that standard, it did give, as Heather said, us ability to think forwardly. And I think there did emerge some common themes on what we as a committee might like to focus on. And as Heather mentioned, I think specifically the programs that we are putting together and buttressing in our special ed environment are something that as we hopefully put COVID in the rearview mirror, we can begin to put a narrower focus on for the committee. With respect to management and operations, where Dr. Hunter earned an exemplary overall rating, to me, this was the standard where there, there is a, a great deal of praise. The combination of her leadership team, specifically with Jared and, and how we're managing the fiscal operations and how the, how we interface with other town, important town committees was of particularly high praise. And the, and making the process very accessible, not only to people on the school committee, but to the public as well. I think that in years past, the budgeting project, the process has been less transparent and more confusing. And I think that this district and, and the overall community has really demanded a, a cultural change. And it seems that this team, or not it seems, this team has risen to the occasion and that is very much apparent in this standard. Our next standard is family and community engagement, where the, the superintendent earned a proficient rating. Communication seems to be yet another strong suit of this leadership team, specifically Dr. Hunter. And specifically how we engage the community during the truly upending, very nerve wracking time, I think was particularly outstanding. Not only did community, uh, committee members reference how we as a committee felt, but there was a lot of discussion in the documents about how the larger community perceived the communications from the district, to specifically parents. And then again, to how we, Dr. Hunter's leadership team interfaced with all the different various community groups that were necessary to, I think it was, it was a nice metaphor, I don't remember who wrote it, but create like a, a, a very strong web that really buttressed our schools through the pandemic. And it was those partnerships that really were, were instrumental in getting us through this unscathed. With respect to professional culture, I think, geez, I'm so blind. So sad, guys.
Zoom it way up.
So there were sort of two themes that, that kind of emerged there. One was respect to professional culture. And I think the way that it seems that this leadership team and all the teams collaborate together to create a sense of community is really important. I think again, as we emerged from the pandemic, despite the fact that COVID really was sort of the overarching theme of the year, we did also as a school committee and as a district, really prioritize our diversity, equity and inclusion work. And that, like special ed, I think is going to be a theme that the school committee and the district in general truly wants to focus on and continue to work collaboratively to ensure that the rollout with our new director is, you know, fully transparent and continuing to evolve and, and grow and progress. So, and again, that was, sorry if I didn't say that rating on professional culture was proficient as well. So everyone's comments were great. I enjoyed reading them. I enjoyed synthesizing them and yeah.
Thank you. So I'll just, um, just comment on the process also. Thank you all for the time that goes into it. This is a time consuming process to put all those thoughts together and it is one of the most important things we do, so it's very valuable. Thank you all for doing that. I found it very fulfilling and satisfying and it's, it's great to see all of that feedback come together. And when you first read it, very hard to figure out, how am I going to summarize all this? But once you pull it together, it feels like, okay, this feels like a good summary of it all. We should mention too, there was also one comment on the process itself. So this is not a feedback of Dr. Hunter, but on the comment, there was a comment that maybe we, there should be some thought next year to the region versus Concord and whether there should be any delineation or separate feedback somehow. So I will leave that to all of you to discuss for next year, but I'm just making sure that I noted, so it has been noted.
In this past year, there were a few focus indicators that seemed to focus more, for example, on the Concord district than the region. And it might prove beneficial for everybody to, when those focus indicators emerge in the ensuing years, that we do differentiate them just so that, you know, there's, there's further clarification as to everybody's roles. And I think that's, I think that's probably wise.
Thank you. Thank you for laying out the groundwork. We have a lot of, we have your information packet from the beginning of the year with our timeline. We just need to put the dates into going forward. So that's great. Thank you.
I'm glad, you're welcome.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
And on the note of the calendar for next. And on the note of the calendar for next year.
Something not in the rubric. I'm very satisfied with the process. Don't want to talk about the process or the content. I think they did a wonderful job. So thank you, Heather. Thank you, Alexa.
Yes.
But I do want to say, Dr. Hunter, something that didn't fit into the rubric was any reference to the sheer time you put in. No superintendent comes our way without their family loaning them to us. But I think your family did more than that this past year. I had to take care not to communicate with you at any crazy hours because you would reply. You all know that.
Yes.
So in addition to everything else that's been said, I think we should acknowledge that we are in debt to your family as well. So thank you.
I will pass that along.
That is a very good point.
I know, and I just, I can't, I have to say, this is not a job I do in isolation. And the team that is supporting me and all of us, and the kids especially, just so wrote. I might have set some stones in place this year, but everything that happened was the fluid paths that they built once we set those stones. I will say the one other note of this year especially, I'm a process person. I like to strategically lay it out and make the plan and then navigate my way through that. And boy, was I out of my comfort zone almost since March, pretty much every day since March of 2020. Just making decisions that you really didn't know how they were going to turn out is interesting to look back on and sort of see how we got to those decisions and had some sense that they were going to turn out okay. And then why were they so successful? Because that is absolutely not all me, and that absolutely pervades the entire school system and the families and the teachers and the support staff and every, you know, we were the bus drivers last week, and we can't, I mean, they literally are the way we were able to bring all the kids back in April because they were willing to come during the middle of the day. So it just was such a united effort. And I'm watching other districts as they sum up their years either in this process or otherwise, you know, really looking at, you know, harm they've got to undo. And I feel so fortunate that I think we actually might have some places where better. And that's not on me. So thank you. I'm really appreciative, of course. And I have all your individual documents, and we'll spend time with them.
For sure. Great.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Heather. The last thing I'll give you, you can choose to replace your current one with it or not, but as I showed you on Zoom, you now have a new nameplate. Then according to the student in kindergarten, the year you arrived, you are Dr. Lori Hunter, superhero of schools.
That might have been on the door that month.
I will deliver that to you on your end. Do you all want to be an exec because of this EZTA or no? I could wait around or not. I should have touched base on that later. Give it some thought. I'll be here for you. This goes here.
Thank you. If you can stay, then I think that's great.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I think it's worthwhile.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, so on to the issue of calendars with our calendar update. I just want to note right now that we will not be able to formally seat the region, the new region chair, vice chair, until Carlisle has its elections on the 22nd of June. And so our meeting after that is when we will seat that new committee properly.
Yep.
And we have sent out a doodle poll for the, just to work on that sticky July date. If you have not yet done so, please do fill it out. Though I may be the only one who has, and I just looked at it, I think I might be the only one who has.
That's good.
But so I think we're narrowing down, get into a date there. So we should have that calendar worked out. And I think that's all we had for updates on the calendar issue, right? Which brings us then to Jared with the end of year close update.
So I updated the memo from May 21st with only a few things. So right now, our numbers are holding. I do anticipate the surplus number that I provided you. The couple of differences, as you know, you lower the assessments next year by 300,000. Therefore, we need to increase our reserve to reduce. We also reduced the, I took off the design services for the amenities building. That is something that you asked me to remove. I also have sort of a little update as well that we have been looking into if approved. And yet, this is just a recommendation, this is all your decisions. One of the things we're looking into, if you do approve the electric school bus, a vehicle to grid converter, so you can sell power back to CMLP. That would be about an additional 50,000, what we're thinking right now. I don't know if I'll have that, but it's just something that we are looking into. So I'll sort of start from the beginning, just because you haven't seen this before. So we start our closeout every single year around May. This year was a year like no other. We received, we received a number of additional funds, federal funds from CARES Act. We received 297,000. That has been spent, that is spent. We received 26,000 in the initial DESI emergency relief. We anticipate to roll that over into future years. We received another $85,886 in DESI emergency relief too. That is also something that we can anticipate to move to other fiscal years. And we just received another $192,889. So what that allowed us to do, especially using that original CARES Act money, it allowed us to transfer some monies that we had originally appropriated in the FY21 budget to these for PPE, for student supervisors, et cetera. What this also did is this year, due to a number of things, created more surplus. I think that we put together a very good budget. You know, the principals, department chairs all followed it. They used up their supplies from FY20 into FY, so they didn't need as much supplies. That is, I'm seeing right now in the available balances. Again, especially tuitions came in under what we thought. We did prepay tuitions last year. We didn't prepay CPS, but we did prepay the high school. So that also helped with the surplus. Utility costs are down. So overall, that also, all of that contributed to the surplus. There's three main revolving accounts that we, that sort of impact the general fund balance. One of them, the first one being the athletic revolving account. We do feel that we're going to be able to carry at least a $300,000 budget going forward, which is high. We did have savings due to the fall sports and transportation, as well as some supplies. So we do feel that this balance is going to carry over into next year. This can help pay for capital projects, such as if committees so chooses, can help offset some of the turf expenses that we anticipate in the next four to five years. The food service revolving account, our food service revolving account, as you all know, is self-funding. We did anticipate a loss in FY20 as well as FY21. But we did carry over a six-month balance. So we think, and this is also included in the numbers, that we can get that six-month balance back by charging about $100,000 worth of food service expenses to the general fund if the numbers stay the way that we think that they are. So that would give us, you know, about a six-month worth of expenses, which is on the high end. And we do expect next year to start at least having a profit of a dollar. That's always the goal, have a profit of a dollar. The last one is the circuit breaker. So we received $872,560 in FY21. By law, we're allowed to carry over that amount into FY22. That is the goal. We anticipate being able to carry that amount over. So that's good news. That's a contingency that we've had for the past few years. So what we have recommended to, what we're recommending to cover some of the 1.3 surplus would be, one would be the 450,000 in special ed tuitions that we're estimating right now, the 368,502 in the freshman MacBooks, and then 350,000 in the electric bus. But it's important to point out that 70% of that would be eligible for reimbursement over the next five years. And then lastly, the surplus, remaining surplus would be about 200,000. And we recommended that to be put into the capital stabilization account. So it's a lot of information. Happy to answer questions. Again, all just recommendations. This is all your decision. And I will end with this. There's also a good chance that we will have additional monies that may, that we just cannot spend. And what will happen is that will automatically go back to the towns once they estimate our E and D, which would be around January or February of next year, and that would offset the third or fourth quarter assessments. I'll know around August 15th where, I'll give you a preliminary number at that July meeting of where I think we're ending. And then probably the last meeting in August, I'll have a pretty good idea of where everything is going to end.
Can you just clarify that this is after we meet our E and D commitments?
Yes. So right now, we are at 4.99. So any dollar that, up to, I think it's like 20,000 to get us to that 5%, essentially any dollar left over would go back to the towns because we have hit that 4.99. As long as we end the general fund with at least $700,000. $600,000 to meet the reserve to reduce amount, and $100,000 to offset the interest deficit that we experienced this year.
So Mr. Stanton, if I, if I may, if I understand it correctly.
Question?
Your proposing the school committee consider one motion tonight to increase the general fund operating budget, and it references the stabilization fund. Implicit in that is the material in the other memo of June 11.
Correct.
So one, one motion encompasses all of that. Come back to the food service, self-funded, we hope. In a normal year, when we didn't have the swings that you've had to deal with this year, what would be a normal front load? Three months? Where we enjoy six months this year?
Correct. And I will say, and I've said this before, I inherited a very, very healthy food service program that our current director only made it blossom even more, even though we have experienced a loss. Many districts, especially this year, are covering this through the general fund, and some districts are covering it through their free cash because you can't run a revolving account in a deficit. If we ended in a deficit in the food service, that would have to come from the general fund and have to be covered in the town by free cash and in a regional by the E and D. So three months is, three to four months is recommended, but not many districts get there.
Can you speak a little bit about the athletic account? What's the normal?
So I think my first year, we had about 60 to 70,000 in it. And we made the decision last year to put more money into the athletic revolving because we just didn't know what would happen in this fiscal year. While you're not supposed to have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in the athletic revolving, if, for instances like this, our auditors, we've already checked in with them, they are okay with this high balance. They're also okay that potentially we could have some future capital expenses that if this committee so chooses, that could be paid out of this. Next year, when we go back to a normal year, this is, I do not, we will not have this high balance going forward. Also during budget time, we'll have some decisions to make if we want to use some of the athletic revolving account to offset some of the general fund expenses, because we do pay all of our coaching salaries out of the general fund. So we not only have expenses in the athletic revolving, we also have it in the general fund.
And that's all right? That's easy enough to.
Correct, yep. You don't want to create a cliff. It might be a one-year thing, but if this committee so chooses, then we can have that discussion.
You don't expect the revolving fund, the athletic, to grow anymore than it is right now?
I do not after this year.
Because we did raise fees a couple of years ago.
Yep.
And I think we might, if this does grow anymore, I think we need to go back and look at that because it's a little unbalanced, as some of the teams don't really spend that much money, honestly, and they may have a very high subscription. And then might not necessarily benefit from a targeted expenditure. So I think we have to be careful.
Yeah, it's a very odd year.
No, I know.
Because we defended the fees, but we didn't transport kids the way we normally do. We only within the same few communities that were really local, and we only drove them minimally versus.
Just for the public, I always say.
You're completely right.
Is that, so we need to watch it through the fall and be sure that we don't end up with a surplus after that, a real fall season.
Yeah.
Good for you.
And the electric school bus, that's doable by June 30?
It is. We, so because we've already done bids for the VW, I don't have any updates, I'm sorry. The VW bus, we do have a bid ready to go. So if, so we will be able to do that if you decide to.
I was just going to ask if you had any feedback from last night from the Carlisle FinCom?
Oh, Carlisle FinCom. I think they appreciated this dive, and I think that should we ever find ourselves in this situation again, that we should engage with the FinComs of both towns earlier just to explain what it is, our thinking. The main point was to communicate to them that we have been thinking seriously about how to use this money and about how to protect the interests of the taxpayers of the districts and how best to utilize this money so that if there are, for example, you know, the electric school bus, you can make a lot of arguments for, yes, it's a lot right now, but it makes a lot of benefits just from our environmental goals, as well as from a fiscal responsibility perspective. And so while it's something that maybe wouldn't have necessarily been achievable in normal, you know, without this surplus, there are a lot of reasons to proceed with. And it's not just, oh, we can buy an electric school bus, right? I mean, right now, you do have, you get the reimbursement. You get the, and it of course holds up our goal of sustainability. So it was mostly to communicate to FinCom those kinds of conversations that we're having. And the same thing, we talked a lot about the stabilization fund and how there's little appetite for just putting money into a stabilization fund for the sake of putting it there. But there's a little, there's more interest in if we know that there are real capital expenses coming in the near term, that it's probably a more efficient way to put the money there, or could be considered a more efficient way to put the money there than to return to the towns later on for long-term CATS requests or submit separate warrant article. So that was, that was most of the conversation. I don't know, do you have any? Dr. Hunter, Jared, do you have anything to add?
I think that would be my, I think you captured my impressions. Well, they just really were hoping to engage, which I think, I think they were glad to hear we were still in the decision-making process and that things hadn't happened without them at all being involved. And I'm glad we went, and we will need to continue to communicate with them.
Really curious. We've had a few discussions about the feedback to municipalite. Do we have any of those generating capacities now? I can't remember.
I.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I think the one you referred to would be our first.
The one I referred to, and what it would do is it would allow up to three buses to generate that in that energy. So we want to look at that.
And implicit in. And implicit in what you're saying is that you could have the authority to make that purchase if the closeout finances enabled it.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Yep.
And that cost is about what?
We're thinking $50,000, and, and this all came about, I'm sorry, the last...
He's apologized because I'm hearing it for the first time. Apparently it happened recently.
Right today.
Well, you, if I'm correct, you have the authority to authorize those expenditures, but we can still register an opinion.
Yeah. If, if the funds are available, we would certainly want to hear the word.
I'm certainly in favor of it if you do the due diligence with the light plant, which I'm sure you will.
And it's a nice compliment. You remember, we got money a year ago at town meeting for infrastructure work at...
That's what I was gonna say.
Which is underway, Jared?
It is.
It is underway, so that we have more charging stations and greater capacity over there.
I think that was a free cash, Concord free cash.
And it was even a citizen petition.
From it was?
Yes, yes, yeah. Good, okay. We're moving along.
Yes, we are. Okay.
Okay. Further discussion, conversation, questions? No? Thank you, Jared, for all of the updates, for, you know, the ever-evolving suggestions and recommendations and, and really for, you know, for getting us through this year. And so with that, I think we are on to action items. Wow, all right. So the first action item is a vote to approve Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations contract.
So I'll make a motion that the Concord and Concord Carlisle school committee's vote to approve the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations contract.
Yeah, I'll just clarify, it's a three-year contract, Jared, it's commitment. I'm trying to decide if it's you committing or him, or we're just trying to be sure he doesn't come anywhere, 21 to 24.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call vote.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I, for both, this is a both.
Yeah, both, yeah, I'm sorry. Anderson, I for both.
Morano, I for both.
Miss Depp, I for both.
Is that with us? I think, Eva, are you here?
I'll go, Radi, I for both.
And Wilson for region. Motion passes. The next item. I think that was an I?
Yes.
For region, okay. Vote to approve the Concord Carlisle Regional School District Custodial Unit three-year successor agreement. And I have a motion.
I'll make a motion, the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to approve the CCRSD Custodial Unit three-year successor agreement for the period of '22 to '24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Jared, do you want to give us that?
Yeah, I do. It was, I just want to thank their team, and our team as well. It was a very good negotiation, very professional. They came in with very respectful wishes, and, and we were able to get something done in, I think, two or three meetings. So they were ready to go.
Thanks to Steve Wall and his team for all their hard work this year. We really appreciate it, and I know their year isn't quite over, so keep up the good work.
Yes.
Thank you so much to the, to the team, to, to the custodian, to the custodial unit. Thank you. Okay.
Ready?
Ready. Anderson, I for both.
Region only. This one's region.
Yep. Anderson, I.
That's why we have chairs. Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Miss Depp, I.
Mostafi, I.
Rainey, I.
Wilson, I. Passes, thank you. Vote to approve the maintenance two-year successor agreement. Motion? Sure.
I will make the motion that the Concord Public School Committee vote to approve the maintenance unit two-year successor agreement for the period of 20,000, or 2022 to 2023. And a second motion, that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to approve the maintenance unit two-year successor agreement for the period of 2022 to 2023.
I, I don't have my Roberts rules with me. Do we each have two motions on the table at once?
Oh, I think you have to do one at a time.
Yeah. So we'll just...
I'll withdraw the second motion.
Second to first motion.
Thank you.
With, thanks to our maintenance staff, it's a small number of people who toil around all the buildings. Much of their work is unseen until we enjoy the benefits of it. So thank you to them for everything they did to get us through this year.
I'll second that, Mr. Griffin. Thank you to you and your team. And again, unsung heroes, they just do the work, don't expect any praise, and they, a lot of them have been here for many, many years, and they're great, great people, so.
You're great. Concord, roll call, please.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Rainey, I. Oops, sorry.
Miss Depp, I. Mostafi, I.
I will make a second motion, that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to approve the maintenance unit two-year successor agreement for the period of 2022 to 2023.
Set.
Anderson, I.
Discussion.
Jared, do you have anything else?
Do you have anything more to say?
About the region, regional agreement?
They do the same...
Same thing. Same thing. Curveball. Same thing. Thank you, guys.
I felt spoiled in that negotiation. It was a breeze. They were great.
Okay.
All right, I'm ready. Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Miss Depp, I.
Eva?
Rainey, I.
Wilson, I.
Okay. Thank you. We have a vote to prepay Concord Carlisle Regional School District Special Education tuitions. They're a motion.
I move that the Regional School Committee authorize the prepayment of fiscal 2022 tuitions in accordance with MGL Chapter 71, Section 71D, and MGL Chapter 40, Section 4E.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Think we know where we are with that?
Yeah, just similar to earlier. This allows us to do that.
Did you hear that for CPS? So basically, they identified 450,000, we can prepay three months' worth, 100% of collaboratives. And in the years, in the years past, we have prepaid the high school tuitions, and we're sort of just formalizing it this year. While it's not required to vote, it is required to have a conversation about it and sort of authorize me to prepay.
Great. Okay, roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Miss Depp, I. Mostafi, I.
Rainey, I.
Wilson, I.
Thank you. Okay. And now we have the vote to increase the budget using E and D in order to transfer to stabilization account.
All right. So this one reads, the, I move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to increase the fiscal '21 general fund operating budget to $35,158,922. This is an increase of $200,000, which will fund the stabilization line. Revenue for this increase will come from the excess and deficiency account, resulting in no change to the member municipality's assessments.
Second? Second. Discussion.
So I, I sent the memo to you all on June 10th, sort of outlining how this process works. I can go over it, or I can answer specific questions. So ultimately, just a high-level version, that, as you know, back in 1991, town meeting approved a stabilization fund. There are two ways to fund the stabilization account, as outlined in the memo. One would be sort of a line item approved in the budget process, and the other one would be from E and D transferred into the stabilization account. Currently, as, currently, we have $1.6 million in the, in E and D. So ultimately, I will end the general fund balance with an additional $200,000, and it will go back and plug into that $200,000 that you're moving from E and D. So it would be, it would go back to that 4, 4.99%. Our treasurer will send a letter to both, both towns, saying that we are going to increase our budget using E and D to fund the stabilization account. They will have 45 days to reply, and since we're not asking any money, for any money, they can do it as soon as they wish. Once we receive both authorizations back from the towns, then it's just sort of a general entry with our auditors and all of that. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there more discussion? Everybody's comfortable? We've had this conversation a bit.
One last thing, just so you all know. Once this money is in the accounts of, this currently 8,000, the school committee does have authorization over this money. It would not go back to town, town meeting to spend it.
And, and we have noted that, notwithstanding that, we would want to make that quite a public process.
All right, okay. I just, the 45 day, I mean, that just...
So it doesn't matter that it could go into next fiscal year, it's, it's just a general entry. As long as we get the vote before June 30.
Okay, fantastic, great. Okay, roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Miss Depp, I. Mostafi, I.
Rainey, I.
Wilson, I.
Thank you. And now is there a motion to...
I move that the Concord School Committee...
Can I just make a...
Yeah, please.
I, I feel like I missed my opportunity at the Concord School Committee meeting, but I just want to thank, as we are on the eve of the last day of school, I want to thank everybody, all, all of our teachers, our students, our families, our building service workers, our food service workers, and everybody who I'm forgetting, our bus drivers, for their incredible work, patience, just, yeah, I can't say enough. And I'm sure everybody in this room feels the same way, so.
Thank you to everyone in this room.
Yeah, thank you for saying that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Certainly very true.
So we can now proceed?
We can now proceed. We can now proceed.
Okay, so I, it's hard to follow, I'd rather end right there. The Concord School Committee and the Concord Regional School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect for collective bargaining with collective bargaining units. Concord Teachers Association, the Concord Carlisle Teachers Association, and return to open session, and I so move.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I for both.
Morano, I for both.
Miss Depp, I for both. Mostafi, I for region.
Radi, I for both.
Wilson for region. See you all in a bit.
Our remote school committee members here are getting a link now, so you can join us in exec session differently.
Thank you.
Then you're gonna remove the chair back down? We are coming back.
Okay, we are here for our last action item, which is the vote to approve the CCTA contract '21 to '24. I have a motion.
Have it in front of me. Where I'll just read group thing.
And I got kicked off the internet, so I can't...
Anybody have it up?
Oh, I do. I'll make a motion. The Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to approve the three-year contract '21 to '24 for the Concord Carlisle Teachers Association. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? No?
I, I want to say that I greatly appreciate the dialogue that we had with the Teachers Association, and I think it was a very productive series of sessions.
It was productive, and I think we may have exhausted this word, but I think it was collaborative. And I think it was, I think it was indicative of really, of, of how everyone in this district, how we got through this year, right, because of the collaboration between everybody, and we've seen it through the bargaining units that really represent almost everybody in the district, right, and districts, and, and in this. So I appreciated the conversations.
Students remained at the forefront of those conversations, and that was very heartening for all the parties.
All right. Time for a vote.
Anderson abstains, because I have a very fabulous sister-in-law who teaches at CCHS.
So you abstained through the whole process?
Yes.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Miss Depp, I. Mostafi, I.
Rainey, I.
And Wilson, I. Motion carries. Oh, very good. So can I have a motion to adjourn? Any closing comments for our last school committee meeting?
Of '21.
I think we have expressed our appreciation to many people. I think our new chair, Cynthia Rainey, expressed that those thanks could not be overstated, and try as we might, we can't overstate them. We are deeply in debt to everybody who made this year possible. Thank you. Have a safe summer.
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
Morano, I for both.
Miss Depp, I for both.
Mostafi, I for region. Rainey, I for both.
Wilson for region. Thank you all, good night.
Safe summer.
Thank you. We're done.